And so we will go back, we're still on conduct of business, but let's go back to item A and read that quickly. And again, as you know, that was received, the third quarter financial update report for 2020-21 as of March 31st, 2021, and adopt a resolution approving the third quarter budget amendment for fiscal year 2020-21, operating and capital budget. Turn it over to the city manager and then the finance director. And again, if we could hold our questions until the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Chen Yusong. I'm the finance director for the City Council Bruno. And today I'm going to present the third quarter financial update for this fiscal year, fiscal year 2021. The objective of this presentation is ask the council to receive the third quarter financial update report as of March 31st, 2021. There is no action need to be taken tonight. And then second item needs some action from the council to adopt the resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 operating and capital improvement budget by approving the budget amendments. The agenda today includes the general fund budget overview, the third quarter financial projections, and the city manager is going to come up to discuss, to provide a budget preview for the next fiscal year 2021-22, and in the end, the council will discuss and deliberate. Again, what we're going to talk about, the third quarter of this fiscal year, which starts from January 2021 and in March 2021. Here is the general fund budget overview. If you do remember, when the current year budget was adopted, we're estimating a 48.7 million in revenues for the general fund and 49.3 million in expenditures. We had asked the council permission to use $591,000 for of the general fund balance to cover the shortfall. Here is a look at the general fund's revenue summary and expenditures. General fund revenue is relatively diversified, and 25% of the general fund revenue came from property tax. And then another transfers and then other revenues count about 21% of the general fund revenue that's the second largest item. The third one is sales tax by 13%. Expenditure size were not so diversified, and most of our expenditures are coming from staffing-related costs. By department, safety means police and fire departments account over 47% of the general fund expenditures. Here is a third quarter general fund update. As of March 31st, we are looking at the entire, we estimate as of year end will receive about $50 million in revenue for general fund and then just around $48 million in expenditures operationalized. And we're actually going to see way with operational activity, we're going to see about a million dollar in surplus this year. And we'll end the year with a fund balance of almost $2.4 million. Here is a look of the general fund revenue for this fiscal year. We did amend the general fund revenue by making several cuts, and I'll talk about cuts in a few minutes later. So as of right now, we're anticipating the amended budget. The revenue will exceed the amended budget by $286,000, but that's based on the decreased amended budget. There are some cuts involved in the amended budget is vehicle license tax. We cut the vehicle license tax revenue projection by $621,000 because more schools in the county are converting from non-basic schools to basic schools and then they're reduced the funding resource for vehicle license fees. We're also seeing a decrease in the sales tax receipt. Sales tax will be down by another $350,000. And departmental revenues are also down by $377,000. To come up for, to make, for some of the lost revenue, charge for services and transfer other funds are going to exceed the amended budget by 1.5 million. So that's kind of put us a little bit in the good. Spentiture-wise, the city staff has exercised proactive spending controls. And then we will end the year with expenditure about 1.2 million below the amended budget. Expenditure savings are mostly associated with the position vacancies and delayed recruitment. Social restrictions imposed by coronavirus have caused some service reductions specifically related to community service department, and they had to cut a lot of programs because of social distancing mandates. Here is a look at enterprise and internal service fund budget update. Enterprise funds as of the third quarter of this year, the revenues and expenditure receipts are mostly on par as the previous year. One thing I want to talk about is the city net. And the city net for the year end estimate, they're going to receive about 9.4 million in revenues. Expenditures is going to be $9.7 million. That expenditure includes the debt service items. Operational wise, the city net is actually going to break, meaning their operating management revenues will closely packed to their operating expenditures. However, there is no excess funding provided for their debt service, which is related with the router debt, and it's about $350,000. That's why you are going to see at the year end that they're going to look at enough additional deficits, $302,000. There are some improvements in this, and some budget control effort made in the city net. I think we should applaud for them, given their very difficult financial situation. The TV content expansion has been reduced by almost $800,000. They invested additional $115,000 in equipment replacement, IP TV platform, eliminated fiber bills. The revenue gap is really caused by some delinquencies. They have lost, the city net lost revenue from about 250 service accounts every month. You know, throughout the year, they serve about a total 7,000 homes. It's actually equal to 7,000 accounts. They have increased, proposed some increase in the average revenue per user. It was approved, and the approved target was $120 per month, but in reality, they're only able to collect about $109 a month, so there's a $10 difference. And there is a substantial amount of delinquency bill value, which is recreating quite a bit of drag on the revenue for sitting at enterprise funds. So they have some budget management measures, which include the delinquent account collection efforts and the service downgrades. They're not disconnecting any of those of their accounts. They have just-in-time inventory replenishment and the equipment management policy. They also intend to equalize expenditure with operating revenues. And now we have seen them doing that, making valiant effort, trying to equalize their expenditures and operating revenues. Here is a look at the city's internal service funds as of March 31st. Throughout the year, we're expecting the internal service funds to be on par with the previous year. And the internal service fund is mostly funded by the city departments. All departments can contribute to the internal service funds to make it a whole and then try to maintain a certain level of fund balance for those funds. So there is no issue there. There are some budget amendment requests, and the total amendment request accounts about $242,000. So we said this ends my part for the third quarter financial update. And now, and so let's turn to the city manager for the budget review.
Thank you, Chen Yu. I want to begin by thanking Chen Yu, who started in March and immediately begun our budget development process and really jumped right in. And so my job right now is to give you a quick overview of next year's budget. I will just recap for council. What you heard was the third quarter update for the current fiscal year. Know that the fact that we're ending a little up in the general fund is a reflection of we cut and we cut deeply, and expenditures in the general fund have been throttled back, and so we're ending with not spending approximately $1.2 million of the adopted expenditures, which is great news, and that's the constantly moderating expenditures as best as we can. But just a quick highlight of the coming fiscal year, so fiscal year 2021 for the public. We operate on a July 1st to June 30 fiscal year. And what's before you is a highlight of the general fund preliminary budget, which shows that with using the fund balance that we have projected at the end of the year, revenues are 4.9, 49.7 million. Expenditures are projected at 51.1 million, and so that leaves a deficit of 1.4. And utilizing the money within fund balance, the 2.3, that leaves us a remaining fund balance of 0.9 million or roughly 900,000. But what that does is that takes us under our policy target to have a $1.5 million fund balance in the general fund at budget adoption. And so we will need to transfer in $600,000 to make that policy limit. I will say, and I know the city council knows this, this is a highlight. At the end of this week, you will receive your proposed budget from the city. And then in June, we will set about a host of study sessions and public hearings on the budget. So this is just a quick highlight, as you know. What's also important to note on this slide is we and all other municipalities in the country frankly have the American Rescue Act funds that were meant to provide resources to cities like ours that have lost revenue due to COVID-19. And we know that our annual revenue is off more than 5 million due to COVID-19. And so that revenue number would be a lot higher, and with expenditures at 51, without COVID-19, we wouldn't have this deficit, because we cut deeply. And in this baseline budget, we are not projecting to return all of those expenditures that were cut from the budget. So yes, we still have a challenge. Yes, during the budget, we will talk about how we apply that American Rescue Act funds, which is $8 million, that have to be spent between, over the next, I think it's three and a half years. It's by December 31st, 2024. And so that money was meant to restore a portion of the funds that cities have lost. And so we will be proposing to use a portion of those funds to help out our 2021 budget, because we will still have a deficit, because our revenues will not be back at pre-pandemic levels. Other funds, just to highlight, our water and wastewater or sewer fund are in good standing. And as the city council knows, you canceled the 5% rate increases on those funds because those funds are in good status and can do without those rate increases this year. Citynet, as our finance director mentioned, has actually done a great job to throttle back their expenditures due to loss in both customer base and loss in revenue due to non-payment. And they're projected to end next year and the current year with operating expenditures and operating revenues being, if not even, very closely even. The challenge is that they are not able to pay the money that is owed to the general fund, and that is both for the annual debt service and the annual fund deficit. I will say on Citynet that the city council knows we will continue to talk about strategies for Citynet as an enterprise and as an operation. As you know, your auditor recommended that we undertake a third-party study of the Citynet business plan. We are getting ready to release an RFP for that, and we will continue to talk about strategies for Citynet. And again, as the council knows, the first thing that we've done is really renegotiated a number of contracts and brought in expenditures as close to revenue as possible. Stormwater, as the public knows, we have a current storm drainage and flood protection fee that is going through a Prop 218 property owner election now. That fund will enter into the negative by approximately $1 million next year. And so should that Prop 218 election fail, we will need to address that $1 million. And those are expenditures that are planned for our stormwater system in 2021. And so we will have some tough decisions to make. Either we will throttle back expenditures and decrease maintenance and service on our stormwater system, or we will supplement that from the general fund. And what you've seen in this prior slide is the general fund is ending with a fund balance of 1.9 million. And so to balance the general fund, we will be using ARA funds. And so we will begin to enter into a deficit position in stormwater, and we will, if the current measure doesn't pass, make some tough decisions on what we do with our stormwater system. Now, this does not include our reserves. The city does have reserves. I just want to point out that what we're talking about here is operating, and that's important for the public to know. We're talking about operating funds, not reserve funds. But stormwater will be entering into an ongoing deficit position, subject to approval of the fee. And so we would not want to burn our reserve funds on that, but we will have to throttle back those expenditures or find some way to cover those funds. So you have received the third quarter update. There's no action with regard to that update. It is just a reporting out. There is one action, adopt a resolution amending the operating and capital budget by approving the budget amendments as required. But that concludes our presentation. Again, the proposed budget is due out at the end of this week, and then the city council will have budget deliberations and discussions beginning in the month of June with adoption plan for your last meeting in June in order for next year's budget to take effect on July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you to the finance director and the city manager for their presentation. And I'd like to bring it to council for questions on the presentation. Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First question, slide 16, regarding the insurance. Seeing the expenditure at 90% of budget, do we have? Maybe we can have a couple of comments on that number being so high. Is that expected to be at this point, or what's happening there? Do you want a number of questions, Mr. Mayor, or do you want one at a time?
Great, great point. City manager, finance director, what would you prefer?
It would be nice to have all the questions from each individual council member at one time, and then we will address them after each council member.
Perfect. All right, Vice Mayor, continue.
Yes, thank you. For the non-payment in Citynet services, how much is the non-payment? And that would be eligible for ARA funding? The last question is, for the ARA funding, how much is it over the number of years? If we can get a breakdown, I had somebody ask me the other day, and I want to make sure we're after it and answering it. Thank you.
Any other colleagues with questions? We'll put them all forward. Councilmember Mason, please. No, I'm sorry, city manager, I thought you wanted all the questions first.
I'm sorry, I may not have been clear. I think we can answer councilmembers and the devious questions, and then go to the next council member.
Okay, so we'll take a council member at a time. So thank you, city manager, for the clarification, and we'll look forward to your responses.
Sure. So let's begin with the last question and then go up. How much revenue is the city receiving from the American Rescue Act? It is $8 million that has to be spent by December 31st, 2024. The next question was, how much is the Citynet non-payment amount? And how much can be used from the ARA funds? So while we look for the non-payment amount, it is important to note that we will have those discussions at budget time. The staff will not be recommending that we cover utility non-payments, whether it is Citynet, water, sewer, or garbage charges through ARA funds. There are other state and federal funds that help customers pay utility accounts. And so we will be reaching out to our customers with delinquent utility accounts and providing them with the information where they can apply to the state program first for, to participate if they meet the criteria so that those utility bills can be paid. And so that's first step before we use the ARA funds to cover the delinquent utility bills.
The Citynet director informed me that the delinquent amount is roughly about $25,000 a month. So we're estimating they're losing about $300,000 during revenue from customers.
Yes. It's important to note, though, that the loss of revenue does not, dollar for dollar, translate into a delta between revenue and expenditures. So if a customer's bill is $80, and they don't pay that $80, there's a portion of that that is hard cost to the city. And so just know that a $300,000 loss in revenues is not necessarily a gap of $300,000 to the enterprise revenues over expenditures.
Regarding the insurance question, that's the part I am not so sure where you're looking at a high percentage. So for insurance, as of March 31st, we received the 75% of our budgeted revenues. We spend about 77% of our budgeted expenditures. The 90% was actually from last year.
Got it. Got it. Thank you. One last follow-up question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Please, Mr. Vice Mayor.
The ARA money, is there a limit how much can be spent per year? Or the limit is just, it has to be spent by 2024?
There is no limit on how much can be spent per year. However, ARA will be paid out in two installments. Half in June 21 this year, and the other half one year from then. There are tons of regulations around expenditures and use of ARA money. We'll cover that during budget. The U.S. Treasury is continuing to come out with regulations and clarifications of ARA expenditures. And we will certainly handle all of that through our budgeting process.
Thank you.
Real quick, then we're going to go to Councilmember Mason on the ARA. I understood that, too, two installments, like you said. And is it that they don't have to be spent, but they have to be obligated by, as you said, December 31st, 2024? And does that hold true for the second amount, or does that go to 2026?
The newly issued Treasury Department guidance said that we need to obligate the appropriate money by December 31st, 2024, but we shouldn't spend all of that by December 31st, 2026.
Okay, thank you. Just since we're on the top, I wanted to clarify. Councilmember Mason.
Thank you. So I did want to just ask some questions around the, starting with the hotel occupancy tax. I know that in the question I asked earlier, and staff has responded to around the short-term rentals, that this is going to be coming back to us at a later time. But what, I think just at this time, what is the status? It does feel like we are losing money. I do see people staying at Airbnbs. There are numerous articles that say that Airbnb has done well during COVID, shockingly, given that people aren't traveling as much. And so I am curious to know exactly where are we really with this item?
And then... Yeah, do you mind?
Yep. No, no problem. The other one is a question that has also been asked in the past. So if this could be answered more effectively, I think at the next budget meeting, it would be really helpful to really understand the card room tax and whether there are any other taxes that are coming from Artichoke Joe's and what those are in comparison to other cities. So that doesn't have to be answered today, but I think that should be answered at the next meeting, at the next budget meeting. Because in the report, there aren't any financial numbers, and that staff did provide that to us in an email later. But I do think it's important that we really have a better understanding of how these taxes at Artichoke Joe's contribute to our funds. There was a section on internal service funds. And I think the question really around the internal service funds is if the city has been, many of the buildings within the city services have been closed over the past year, then what are the fees associated with? Understanding that we've had some emergency services like fire and police that are open, and understanding that people may have been reporting, like maintenance workers may have been reporting to work. I'm just trying to figure out what are the maintenance concerns that have arisen if workers or buildings were close to the public over the past year. And I think that is my last question. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
So let's begin with the short-term rental regulation. So the city council did approximately a year ago establish a short-term rental ordinance which apply our TLT transient occupancy tax to short-term rentals. Staff has been working on implementing that. As the city council knows, the two departments that are chiefly responsible for implementing the short-term rental, both the finance department and the community and economic development department, that project was being led by those department directors. Over the last year, both of those department directors separated from the city. Chen Yu, the current finance director, beginning in March, and the community and economic development director, beginning approximately five months ago. And so implementation of the short-term rental ordinance is a staff work item. It is being supported by the city attorney's office. Staff is working with both the online platforms as well as communicating with HGL, which we recently entered into a contract with, for processing of our business license taxes. They may take over short-term rental tax implementation. We are having those discussions now at this moment. I'm not able to give the city council a precise... I'm not able to give the city council a precise deadline on when that will be implemented. Just know that it is on staff's work program. And the question that we responded to today, we did commit to providing you with an update at a later time. So I just don't want to provide a date now without checking in with all of the staff that are working on that project. With regard to the card room tax, duly noted, and we will discuss that during the budgetary process. Sure.
So councilmember Mason, although our staff report didn't address any number, didn't say any number regarding the card room tax, there is attachment to the staff report, attachment two. And in each major revenue items are listed and the card room tax is listed as midway in the revenue section. For the year, we estimate to receive about 2 million dollars from card room tax. That estimate is based on 38 cables. We just recently received a notice from the Artichoke Joe's owner that he wants to increase the number of cables from 38 to 43 effective June 1. So next fiscal year, we are anticipating a little bit more revenue from card room. But that's the summary for this year. I don't have an answer comparing to other cities, so we can do more research on that. But each city is different. Every city has its different kind of a card room situation. Some city may have more and some city may have less. But that's all I can find more and provide the council additional information with comparison.
Thank you.
Just on the card room, my understanding is every July 1, based on the CPI, that there is an automatic increase that occurs for the card room table tax. I'll call it table tax, which is quarterly, based on numbers of tables that are authorized, which go in groups of four. So it's current, decreasing to that would then go to the next level of more monies per table for all of those because it goes into another tier. Is that correct?
That is correct. In addition, our card room tax is charged on a per-table basis, which was actually more advantageous than some other neighboring cities with card rooms that have a revenue-based tax. So for example, during COVID-19, we did not lose card room revenue because it was based on a guaranteed per-table tax. Whereas other cities that had a revenue structure based on revenue had a significant decrease in their card room revenue. But again, we will talk about that during budget and can come back with more information and more in-depth discussion.
Other council member questions?
Mr. Mayor, I think there was one more question about your service funds. So councilmember Mason asked a question about internal service funds and were there any savings as a result of municipal facilities being closed during the pandemic and some employees working remotely? And so at a high-level answer, there are no significant savings in internal service funds due to COVID-19. It's important to note that our internal service funds are building maintenance, fleet, and IT services. With regard to IT, IT was fully functional during the pandemic, if not more so. With regard to building maintenance, there were no significant appreciable changes in the cost of their operations due to COVID-19. It's also important to note that while some of our facilities were closed to the public, many of our employees were actually on work or on rotational schedules. And so City Hall was actually not closed during the pandemic and was very much a place of work. And not just police and fire staff, but staff from our HR division, our finance division, as well as both the public works and community and economic development counters, for the most part, were open and accepting of customers that made appointments. And they were employees that were on-site for processing and employees were on a rotational schedule. And so with regard to our internal service funds, we are not seeing any significant savings due to the pandemic.
Thanks. Other questions from colleagues? Councilmember Salazar.
Just one question really quick. So the big adjustment item in this proposal is for the traffic engineering consultant. And I read in the staff report that initially the cost for this consultant was going to be offset by savings from an open position, being that we lost our previous traffic engineer. And it also said that the position was later frozen. And then so I guess the funding went away and now we need an additional source of funds to obtain the consultant. And so I just kind of, I wanted to hear sort of the process. Was there at one time, was it decided that we didn't need the position and therefore it was frozen? Or how did we get to the point where we went to having an offset to not having it and needing it again?
Sure, thank you, councilmember Salazar, for that question. The answer is actually multi-part. So yes, we had a traffic engineer that separated from the city to take a job at another agency. That position was vacant when we developed this current-year budget for 2021 fiscal year. It was envisioned that that position would stay vacant because we had a open recruitment and continued to recruit for that position. However, the council and I know our employees remember is that when we adopted the 2021 budget, we had a fiscal shortfall that we were attempting to cover through employee retirements or employees' potentially layoffs. And so at the last minute, we had a number of employees long tenure that elected to retire. What they did was they, in effect, saved a position that was slated to be laid off. And so toward the beginning of the fiscal year, there was an all-out effort to avoid layoffs. And so we essentially froze every vacant position in order to avoid having an employee laid off. One of those vacant positions was the city engineer position. We continued to recruit for that position and hire a contractor to fill in for that work. And we used professional services money that we had to pay for that contractor. One of the challenges is a contract traffic engineer is more expensive than an employee traffic engineer. And so this is one of those interesting positions where when we have a vacancy, it actually costs us more money. Because the contractor in this market makes more than what we pay to employ a position. We have been unsuccessful in our recruitment of a traffic engineer, and that is still an open position that we are still recruiting for. We are doing an assessment and may have to take a look at our long-term strategy for filling that position. Finding traffic engineers in the Bay Area, on the peninsula, and at our compensation level is extremely challenging. And so unfortunately, that work doesn't go away and much of it is mandated. And so we will continue to have to contract for that work at a higher cost.
Okay, thank you for reminding us of all of those events that transpired. And so if we were eventually to be successful in filling that position, then these funds could be then transferred to cover the salary of the FTE. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from colleagues? Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. And I had a similar question that councilmember Salazar just asked. So that detail helped me kind of understand it better, too. So at this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this topic, please raise your virtual hand. We'll give it a moment. And again, this is on the third quarter financial update report. Not seeing any, I'll bring it back to council for any action regarding if we wish to take action and adopt a resolution.
Through the chair, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution making the budget adjustments.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.